Okay, welcome, and we'd like to call the meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to order. Tonight, we're going to be led in prayer by Commissioner Turner, and he's going to be joined with Commissioner Kuch for just a moment, then after that, Commissioner Allen will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Hello, everybody. I've been down to town this week, and I got home and found out last night that a dear friend of all of ours, Mr. Henry Huddleston, had passed on Saturday. Henry has been a founder of this county, a director in terms of how this county was shaped with his civil engineering and survey skills. So, I just want to take a moment to, on behalf of myself and the full commission and the planning commission, who has seen Henry for decades and decades. Sympathy goes out to his family and to Bill Huddleston, his son, who is continuing the legacy, as you all know, and is a good mentor and advisor to the planning commission. So, I just wanted to go on record to acknowledge that Henry will be missed. He was a gentleman, a scholar, and a darn good engineer. So, thank you.
Thank you. Let's pray, friends. Heavenly Father, Lord, thank you again for the opportunity that each one of us have been given to represent our constituents, Lord, and we think of those similar to who Commissioner Kuch just mentioned with the Huddleston family, losing a relative, Lord, and I ask that you be with that family, Lord, and that you be with Vice President Biden's family, Lord, losing a child like that and having to do something that none of us would want to do and bury our son or daughter. I just ask that you continue to be with them, and I think about the Runnels family tonight with Dusty passing and their situation there. I just ask that you be with his children, with Dustin and Cody, and just be with them, if you will, Lord, and walk with them over these next several weeks that are going to be difficult. I'm thankful for those here, Lord, who are serving and those who are watching at home. Be with all of us, Lord. May we honor you with our words, our actions, and our deeds this evening, in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
That am clerk, will you please call the role and maybe if you'd like, introduce your intern that's with you for tonight?
Ajika, and she is our intern for the month of June. We're very proud to have her, and I'm going to brag just a moment. She's also student body president this coming year for Riverdale. So, this is Ajika. Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Piercy.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Kuch.
Present.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Gurley.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Nipper.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Kaplan.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Sereno. We have a quorum, 20 present.
Thank you. All right, you have received a copy of the minutes from the last meeting. We call on Chairman Pro Tem, Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I've reviewed those minutes. I find them in order and move for their approval.
All right, a second from Commissioner Kuch. Anyone have any corrections or additions? If not, then all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you very much. All right, now, we have an opportunity for public comments, and we only have one person wishing to speak tonight, and this person is Greer Bromel, and she's a distinguished staff member of our Greater Nashville Regional Council, and she's a partner with us and with Reba Carlton in our grants that we have available. So, she'd like to give us an update and reach out to the public so they'll know about the opportunities here. So, please give us your comments.
Much, Mayor Burgess. I'm Greer Bromel. I'm with the Greater Nashville Regional Council, and I am working with the county, specifically Reba Carlton, in the mayor's office to assist people with home repairs. There are, in your handout for you, are a list of the requirements. They have to meet a certain income level depending on their family size. We do not have an age limit on this grant, and they have to have repairs that are within a $40,000 limit. You all have done very well with these grants in the past, and the changes, no new houses. We don't rebuild this time, and no mobile homes are going to be worked on at all. That's new THDA rules. But, we've got several applicants already that are going to qualify, we feel certain, and the good news is that you got $200,000 extra thousand from, actually, that the city of Murfreesboro decided to put into your fund. So, we could have made, done well with the applicants we had with the first $120,000, but now we need more. So, we're really asking your help, and that's why I'm here today. The phone number for Reba Carlton here at the courthouse is 615-849-4898, and you can also call me, Greer, at Greater Nashville Regional Council is 615-862-8848. And we'll be glad to send you an application. You could come by and get one from Reba, and we can help fill it out. We require that you own your home, again, that you have proof of income, and that you're current on your county property tax. And we can also do city residents now, too, since we have the new money. So, thank you very much for your time, and if you have any questions, I'll be here, and I've got a card if you need that. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda is elections and confirmations, and we'll call on Commissioner Turner.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. Good evening, commissioners. If you recall, last month, we made a decision to remove this portion of our business from the consent agenda. So, we'll begin by saying, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, you'll find on your iPad a list of notaries that we need to approve. Mr. Chairman, I submit approval for the notaries listed on the iPads.
And a second, Commissioner Cook and others. All right, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Steering would also like to announce an alternate vacancy on the equalization board to fill the unexpired term of John Barbie. Steering would also like to announce two vacancies on the industrial development board and the health and education and facilities board. Next, we need to fill the commissioner vacancy on the insurance committee to replace Will Jordan. After a number of commissioners were enthusiastic about wanting to fill this role, Commissioner Allen emerged victorious, so I would like to nominate Commissioner Allen as the commissioner to replace Mr. Jordan on the insurance committee.
Second by Commissioner Jordan. All right. All right, you have the motion, then. All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
And I'm sure no one is opposed, so we won't ask for that. Thank you very much, Mrs. Allen.
Steering would also like to fill two vacancies on the community care board. With that, we make a recommendation for Mr. Greg Lyles and Ms. Donna Baloo.
Second, Mrs. Cook. Any discussion regarding that? All right, then, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
We also have two vacancies on the line ball library board. Steering would like to nominate Ms. Summa Clark and Mr. Daniel Grace. Mr. Chairman, I submit them for approval.
And a second from Commissioner Stevens. Anyone have any discussion on that? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Steering would also like to announce the appointment of the judicial commissioner for the town of Smyrna, Ms. Maggie Seacrest, and steering would also like to announce the appointment of judicial commissioners for Rutherford County, Suzanne Kaufman, Amy Anderson, and Ms. Kenna Deal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, next is our consent agenda, and we'd like to call on Chairman Pro Tem again, Phillips, for this item.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I've reviewed this. I find the consent agenda appropriate, and barring any commissioner wanting to remove an item and place it on the regular agenda, I move to approve the consent agenda.
All right, do we have a second? Second, Commissioner Jordan. All right, is there anyone wishing to remove any items? Apparently not, then therefore, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Thank you. There is no unfinished business. We can now start the reports by our standing committees, and first is Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee, Commissioner Jordan.
Don't have much tonight. We did try and put as much on the consent agenda as we could because Mayor Burgess is trying to get back to Bonnaroo, so.
Wait. Hold on a minute.
Item K1A, presentation of CTO2534 for recent bond issues. This is just for everybody's information. These reports on this bond refinancing is in your, on your iPad. I did talk to Ms. Nolan a few minutes ago, and through reissuing these bonds, we saved right at a million and a half dollars, taxpayer dollars. We didn't, that's just free money, more or less, so I want to say good job to the finance department and, because do that more often. Our public, our public hearing on the budget is next Tuesday, June 16th, at seven o'clock right here, and want to invite anybody out there who wants to come to tell us what they think about it. I know what a lot of people think about the proposed tax increase, but feel free to show us where we can cut. Our, I've had people say live within your means, or our school system pays significantly under state average for each pupil per year with some of the highest test scores in the state. We build schools significantly cheaper than anybody in the whole state, and we have less administrators per pupil than any other system we can find, but people still say live within your own means. But, Tuesday night, seven o'clock, right here, come and tell us what you think about it, and we'll do our best to oblige. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan, and just a little bit of a follow-up. I just happened to have been in a meeting with a substantial number of state representatives and a few state senators today, talking about education, and this brought it to my mind. And one of the state representatives has two godchildren that attend Central Magnet School, and they receive the highest of honors. I don't know exactly how this works, but in the state of Tennessee, there were 400 students that got to go to Vanderbilt to be recognized for extraordinary accomplishment in the academic world. And he reminded and told this whole group, and gave us credit for all of this, 40 of those 400 students were from Central Magnet. 10% of the students that got the recognition for the highest achievement in the state came from our Central Magnet School. So, I think that's pretty noteworthy, and I'm glad you reminded me to say something about that.
And I forgot something Ms. Nolan told me. The budget will be in the Murfreesboro Post this Sunday, and it'll be on the county website as of tomorrow morning, first thing, so if anybody wants to look at the budget and debt, both of those avenues will be available.
All right, let's do a little bit of revisit here. Mr. Stevens says that we may have, should have actually approved the appointment of the judicial commissioner for the town of Smyrna and the judicial commissioners for Rutherford County. So, in an effort to do our very best to be sure we haven't done something inappropriate, I would entertain a motion, Mr. Turner, to approve the appointment of those two, if you would so make that.
Yes, Chairman, I move the appointment of the town of Smyrna and Rutherford County Commissioners. I'll make that motion.
And do we have a second? Second, Commissioner Allen. Okay, if there's no discussion, then all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Thank you very much, then. Well, I don't know what I'm going to do if we get through before 6:30. This will be a first. Oh, okay. There's not a report from Health and Education Committee, no report from the Property Management Committee, and the Public Safety Committee needs to just make note that the sheriff's handbook has been updated. So, if we could have Mr. Schaefer, you just need to basically make a comment to that, and we'll have to read it into the minutes, please.
It's, the sheriff presented his handbook the other night. It's turned it in, and you can view it, and the latest version, and I'm just trying to see where it is. Anyhow, it's either downstairs, or it's, because it was presented to us here, or you can go out to the sheriff's office. There's very minor changes in it, and the other thing is, is he just gives it to us for our own edification, because whatever he does, he's a constitutional officer, so he has the right to set up a handbook for his own people out there within the confines of the county.
And now, Mr. Schaefer, there is a resolution to simply recognize this and spread it upon the minutes, so, under Public Safety.
Okay, we'll read that. That was just the background to let you know what we're talking about. Be it resolved, the Rutherford County Sheriff's Office employee handbook attached herein is Exhibit 1, and incorporated here in at length verbatim, be spread upon the minutes of the county clerk's office for access by the general public. Resolved this 11th day of June 2015. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
All right, we need a second. Commissioner Sereno. All right, any further discussion? All of you in favor of that, then, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Jernigan, Public Works and Planning Committee, we have one resolution regarding a temporary construction easement.
Whereas pursuant to the private act authorizing the Rutherford County Highway Commission and Superintendent to work on public drainage easements and provide for the maintenance of public drainage easements requires the county legislative body establish an official list of recognized public drainage easements. The attached Exhibit 1 are the easements recommended by the planning department, and whereas the Public Works and Planning Committee has approved the list of public drainage easements as submitted by the planning department. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commission that the planning commission approves an additional public drainage easement. The attached list Exhibit 1 is submitted by the planning department in accordance with Tennessee Code, annotated 54-903 and 54-904. These public drainage, in addition to those previously approved, shall be the only public drainage easements which shall be worked upon by the Rutherford County Highway Department. Resolved this 11th day of June 2015. I so move.
And a second from, who was that? Mr. Dodd. All right, any questions about this? If not, all of you in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. All right, thank you, Commissioner. There's no report tonight from the steering committee. Now, this is the first time, so we advertised these public hearings to be held at 6:30. It is not 6:30. What's the wishes of the commission, and what's your advice, Mr. Cope?
Probably don't need it, but we need to take a 10-minute recess, because we don't need to start before 6:30, so.
Without objection, we'll take a 10-minute recess until 6:30. All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We're ready to continue our meeting. We have two public hearings. Now, Mr. Demossi, the first thing he's going to do is show you how to access these, the information regarding these two public hearings. Do you need to?
Yes, sir.
Take one of our iPads here and demonstrate this, because it's not exactly on your iPad. So, we need to all get our iPads and follow along here, if you choose to be able to see this information.
The, on the iPads, thank you, Mayor Burgess, there is the particular area where it deals with the commission meetings. You don't want to actually be on that. What you want to be on is the folder that says Public Safety, and then, once you get to the public, I'm sorry, not Public Safety, Public Works, excuse me, Plan, Public Works and Planning, once you get to that, there's a folder about two-thirds, three-quarters of the way down. It'll have the date, 2015, June 2nd. You'll hit that.
Wait just a minute, you may, you're, I don't think, we're with you. What, where is this folder we go to? It's not on this particular agenda.
Right, if you go back, if you go back on the, if you're in the county commission folder, go back to the mine documents main folder.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. Go back to my documents.
Everybody at the my documents primary folder now, I mean, I'll walk around, start the whole.
Brad, would you please help them a little bit?
Go back right, punch that. It's going to take you back now. I don't know which one of those we're supposed to hit, but we're going to hit on one of those.
Which one, Brad, are we to be selecting under my documents? What date?
Under my documents, it's the Public Works and Planning folder.
Well, now, do I have it? Have you got it?
Go back farther, excuse me.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, has everyone found those documents? What we could have done, yes, we could have used our four minutes more wisely.
For our next, I'll make sure that it gets into the right location for the next meeting. I apologize for that. Does everybody have the, everybody in order now? Everybody good? Yes, sir.
All right, so, let me say, first request that we have here is a rezoning request, 15-007, and the applicant is Patty Travis. This is for a location along Leanna Central Valley Road. The existing zoning is residential medium density, REM. Proposed zoning is commercial services. The size of the site is approximately 15 acres, with approximately six of those acres requested for rezoning. So, Mr. Demossi, will you may tell us more about this before we have the public hearing?
Yes, sir, thank you, and good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. As stated, the applicant would like to rezone about six acres of the property for a mini warehouse facility. Mini warehouses are only permitted in the commercial services zone by what's called a special exception to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The applicant has been made aware of this. According to information submitted by the applicant, they'd like to provide storage and parking options for homeowners and renters that have restrictions such as parking of recreational vehicles and those type of things at their residences. She also plans to have inside storage units, some with those being climate-controlled, also to have an office and possibly an apartment for added security. The property would be fenced and gated with access allowed only during certain times of the day. The applicants have also provided some conceptual drawings of the proposed development, which you can find in your agenda materials. A portion of this property was rezoned back in October 2013, about two acres of that, for use as a retail shop. Most of you probably familiar with the Dollar General out there on Leanna Road. That's what that rezoning was for. If this particular application is approved, there would still be about nine acres of remaining property out there that's still zoned for residential purposes. I'd expect that sometime in the future, we'll probably see the remainder of that property come in for commercial zoning as well, although I'm not aware of any imminent plans for that to happen in the near future. The applicant also understands that this property is rezoned, that a more formal, constant plan would be required for their special exception application to the BZA. They have already been, have submitted that. They also understand that if it is approved at the Board of Zoning Appeals, that they'll have to go through the planning commission for a official site plan submittal, so they've been made aware of all that. With the recent construction of the Dollar General on a portion of this property, staff is of the opinion that the remainder of the property, again, will develop at some point in the future in a non-residential manner. The commercial services zoning they requested is the same zoning that the Dollar General store is zoned for. If this is pursued, again, they would have to get BZA approval, which the BZA can make additional recommendations and restrictions should they feel it's necessary. Staff did recommend approval of this. There was very little discussion on this item at the planning commission. Most of the questions concerned the remaining amount of residentially zoned property and site drainage. One of the planning commissioners did vote against the proposal, but not because they thought it shouldn't be zoned in a commercial manner, they just didn't feel that the highest and best use of the property necessarily was for storage units. With that, the planning commission did recommend approval. It was a vote of seven for and one against. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is present.
Do you have any questions of Mr. Demossi before we have the public hearing? All right, Mr. Demossi, then, please stand by. We will now declare the public hearing open, and if there are those people present that wish to speak for or against this application, this is your opportunity. So, please come forward and give us your name and address and make your comments. Is there anyone that wishes to speak for or against this request? All right, then, I do not believe anyone wishes to speak, therefore, the public hearing is closed. Commissioner Jordan?
I'm very familiar with this property and the applicant, and everybody out there, I think, is far of this, and so I'll make a motion to approve with all staff comments.
All right, second, Commissioner Phillips. Any further discussion? All in favor, then, please say aye. Are there any opposed? All right, that's approved. Now, we have a second need for a public hearing. There are various amendments to Section 1408 and appendices A, C, and D of our zoning ordinance, and this is pertaining to new regulation for retreats, and the applicant is our planning staff, and Mr. Demossi, you may describe this further, please.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you. Staff is pleased to present these amendments to the zoning ordinance concerning what we're calling retreats. The county's been experiencing something here over the last several months that's pretty much become more of a nationwide, nationwide trend of these type of event venues for weddings, proms, other type of events in barns or barn-type structures which are located in the more rural or rustic areas of the county. This isn't, again, something that we're just experiencing. I know that several of my counterparts around the state are dealing with this issue as well. There's also been newspaper articles that we've seen written in the New York Times about this issue, Tampa Bay Times, and just for, just to name a couple of articles that we're familiar with. While the allure of such a venue is understandable, there are many factors that need to be taken into consideration when someone's trying to plan an event or a venue such as this. Such things include adequate, provision of adequate parking, sensitivity to neighbors as far as sound and lighting's concerned, as well as the structural integrity of the building that's being used for the venue. Our current zoning ordinance regulations don't really adequately address the issues that we've seen with these type of uses. We've researched a number of other ordinances in Tennessee, as well as outside of Tennessee, to kind of try to get an idea of maybe how they're being regulated in those areas. Most of the ordinances that we reviewed contain regulations which concerned minimum lot size, hours of operation, allowable accessory uses, those type of things. The regulations themselves may have contained the same elements, but the actual regulations varied pretty widely, depending on where you were looking. After several meetings and three different public hearings, the planning commission has recommended approval of the amendments that you have attached with your agenda materials tonight. I list the highlights there. I'm going to just kind of go through the ordinance in a little more detail for, excuse me, for your information. When you're looking at the amendments, what we'd be doing, again, we'd be calling this section "retreats." This would pretty much include any type of event venue that we're talking about here. This would pretty much include any type of event venue that we're talking about here. The first item under retreats, under specific uses, theirs is in section fourteen oh eight, which is the special exception area. The application would have to list several pieces of information in order for us to help evaluate the application. You can see things, I won't read these all, but like the expected number of events, maximum number of attendees, those type of things. In addition to those general standards that you see, we'd also want them to meet the following specific standards for these uses, and that's on the next page. The first thing, and this was one that generated a pretty good amount of discussion at the planning commission, was the minimum acreage. When we researched this originally, we saw things all over the board as far as what was being considered by other jurisdictions. Some didn't have a minimum acreage, some were as more twenty, thirty acres. We settled around about ten acres is what we used. Minimum acreage would be ten acres. However, one of the concerns that we heard at the planning commission is there may be some properties out there that are under ten acres that are probably appropriate for something like this, and they, the planning commission wanted to see an avenue for approval of those type venues as well on smaller acreage lots. So, applications for properties that had ten acres or more could go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special exception. If they were under ten acres, we require them to go to the planning commission and to your, this body here, the Board of Commissioners, for a planned unit development approval. The next item was the number of events. This was another one we had a lot of discussion on. We settled on thirty in any calendar year. Again, if they're going to have up to thirty events and they have at least ten acres of land, they can go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for approval. If they're going to have either less than ten acres or more than thirty events, then they would have to go to the planning commission and Board of Commissioners. That's really how we're going to evaluate these type of venues. Those are the two main points right there. The next item down has to deal with, we like to see these on public roads, not necessarily off of private easements. Site plan approval would be required consistent with our zoning ordinance. The maximum floor area for the venue itself would be no greater than two and a half percent of the total lot area, so we would just take the square footage and multiply that by two-point-five percent, and that would give us the maximum area that they could use for a venue. Now, that was something else that went through a lot of discussion. We looked at various, we started out at five percent, we looked at one percent, and we ended up settling at two and a half. They can have certain accessory uses, which are not limited to, but things like banquet facilities, recreational amenities, not intended to be open to the general public. We have spoken to some folks that aren't necessarily looking to do a wedding venue, but they are looking to do like a, like a marriage retreat facility where they would have overnight accommodations, but we have limited that to no longer than seven consecutive days. And that would have to be, basically, what we're trying to do with this is make sure that we're not opening, basically, a hotel or something like that, or a motel in an area. That's why we're limiting that. And we also specifically say that these are not open to the general public as a standalone use. They'd have to be there for a specific use. The next item deals with parking requirements. Parking areas aren't necessarily required to be of a hard dustless surface as most commercial uses are. That would take away a lot of the rustic area and the rustic look of the area, so we allowed the engineering staff and the applicant to kind of work through that. Events would conform to the performance standards in our zoning ordinance in section eleven oh six, dealing with lighting, sound, odors, those kind of things. We did put a provision in there that sound amplification and any outdoor lighting would cease no later than ten o'clock. Signage would have to comply with the zoning ordinance. These next couple, well, this next, well, really, the next two points deal with, they have to, the facilities themselves have to comply with adopted building and fire codes. We realize that there may be some existing structures out there that are pre-existing and that may be too close to setback requirements, and we'll talk about setbacks here in just a minute. So, there is the understanding that there may have to be variances granted for those type of things, but that was something else that we talked about. The next one's really just kind of a catch-all. Any regulations enforced through other agencies, be they federal, state, or other local authorities, have to be met, such as health department, groundwater protection for septic tanks, those kind of things. The next one just deals with addressing. If another facility is added on a property, it may require an additional address for nine-one-one purposes. This, the next item has to do with setbacks for the buildings. We made that contingent upon the amount of buffering that's being provided. Long story short, the thicker the buffer, the less setbacks you have to provide. That's pretty much how that, as simple as that. That would be for the buildings. Parking areas would be allowed to be in with required setbacks, just not the required buffer areas. And then, contact information would have to be on-site in case somebody needs to, if the person's not there, a way to contact the owner or the person running the establishment. A couple of other things, you'll see the next item down's amendment to appendix A for definitions. We'd add a definition for retreat. You'll notice on there that retreats on property that meets state and local definitions of agriculture are exempt from this definition. This is consistent with what state law requires. We also exclude different things, such as temporary uses, which include outdoor performances or seasonal attractions. We're just not wanting to see a backdoor way into getting some of those uses approved. Transient accommodations are hotels and motels. We don't want to see that either. And any use classified as an entertainment or amusement service, be it indoor or outdoor. We would classify these as a minimum, minimal, excuse me, impact facility, which, again, would require special exception approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals unless it's under ten acres or they're offering more than thirty events. And then, you'll see that last item is the parking requirements that we're proposing for that. I do want to clarify just a couple of things. I know this is a lot of information to throw at, throw at you here tonight, but just a couple of the things that this is not intended to do. Again, we talked just briefly about the agricultural, the state laws that govern agricultural uses, they pretty much are exempted from local zoning requirements. So, we understand that there are probably some out there that, in fact, I know there are, that may be operating or looking to operate. We wouldn't be able to regulate those because they fall under that state exemption. Also, something that this is not intended to do, there are, of course, there's a lot of property out there, and there's a lot of folks that have old structures, old barns on their property. We're not trying to tell the ones that just want to have a private event for, like, one of their children or something who's getting married or something to that effect, or a very close family friend. We're not saying that they have to abide by these regulations, these one-time events. We're not looking to govern those type of situations. We're looking to govern the ones that they're looking to do this for their livelihood, or they're looking to do this as a business of some sort. So, that's really what this is intended to do. So, again, I know this is a lot of information to throw at you. I hope it was concise, as concise as I could make zoning amendments, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that anybody may have at this time.
Questions for Mr. Demossi? Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things, Mr. Demossi. I appreciate you clarifying that at the end, because my concern was, I didn't read in here that there was exemption or exception for families. Would there be value in maybe adding that so there isn't that type of confusion? Because that, that was the first thing that I thought of, was, well, what do we do if families want to have a big event like that? Did I miss it? I apologize if I missed it, but is there value in adding that exception in there for family events or family weddings or something to that effect?
Yeah, I don't think you necessarily missed it. I may not have gone over. I didn't read these all word for word. If you look on the, I guess that'd be the, the second page of the regulation of what defines an event, and I'll just read this real quick, but I think this will answer your question. It says, "For the purposes of this section, an event is defined as a celebration, ceremony, wedding, reception, et cetera, et cetera, for the benefit of someone other than the property owner that takes place on a periodic basis involving the gathering of individuals assembled for the common purpose of said celebration and wedding. It does not include uses that are accessory to a single-family residential use, such as private parties, gatherings, and similar."
Okay, good. So, we're comfortable that covers families, and that's, that's what I was looking for. The second question I had was, I was not familiar that this was a big pressing issue with our county or even rural counties. Was there something that happened that, that we were alerted to that said, "We need to come up with a policy," or was just your department doing research, saying, "We need to come up with a policy because it's becoming much more popular?"
No, what's, yeah, then that's a good question. What really brought us to the point of creating some regulations for these is that we're getting more and more phone calls about. This is almost a weekly thing that we're getting in our office. Just within the last couple of weeks, I know I've talked to at least two or three people that are looking to do this type of facility. So, that on top of the fact that, again, we see some of these other articles that are out there where other jurisdictions are dealing with this. We know that there are some that were approved under the older ordinance, a few that are out there, but with this, the popularity of this really exploding and the amount of calls that we're starting to get about this, I'm not going to sit here and say I take half my calls on this because I don't, but it's often enough that it made us look into our ordinance, say, "Okay, we're not set up for dealing with this type of situation."
One more question. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. And so, any of the individual businesses that might already be operating like this, are they grandfathered in or is there something that we tell them, "Hey, you really need to get up to speed in three years, five years"? What's the background on those for?
Yes, the, the ones that were approved under our older ordinance and the ones that have been legally established as agricultural uses under our new ordinance, those wouldn't be subject to these regulations. As you said, they would be grandfathered. Now, there are issues with building codes and zoning. These are separate issues, so they may have to work through some of the building code and fire code issues. But as far as the zoning of the property, if they were legally approved and legally established, then yes, they'd be allowed to continue. Now, that being said, if there are some that are out there that were not legally established, they can't say, "Well, I was in existence prior to these regulations coming on board, therefore, I'd be grandfathered." They have to be legally established to legally continue.
Commissioner Reed?
Mr. Demossi, I could use you this morning when I was getting the calls from the agricultural community, and I could also use you this morning trying to get this out of SharePoint, but I got Ms. Vicki to help me get this all printed out. But I do want to commend the planning commission and yourself on what you've done here, and especially with amendment on appendix A, where you did place in there retreats on property that meets state and local definitions of agriculture are exempt from this definition. Because this is important in today's agricultural area within Rutherford County. You know, we worked hard in the comprehensive plan to make sure agricultural lands were defined, and then we've also had individuals come before this commission right here requesting that their properties be classified as agriculture. We do understand that if you are involved in this type of operation and you are on an agricultural situation, you still are required to prove that you are agricultural. But I did want to commend that, commend the committee for this. I mean, if you've been involved in any way dealing with Tennessee Code annotated as far as the definition of agriculture concerned, you totally understand what that definition means, where agriculture is exempt from zoning and regulation is what you mentioned a while ago. But I do want to commend the, the commission for what they've done here and the way that they've worked with agriculture.
Thank you. Commissioner Schaefer?
Just for clarification for me, there was a place out on two thirty-one heading towards Lebanon. It was just across a county line. It was called Cedar Vine Manor. Okay? Maybe you looked at. Now, to me, that, out there, you, I'm just thinking of the size of the building they had and the house they had with it and all this, that you would have to have, to have a wedding and to have a reception area and this type thing, you'd have to have roughly ten acres to get a four thousand square feet or some, whatever it would, would work out to be when you're saying two and a half percent. And I'm wondering, if you know that Cedar Vine Manor, would it fit into where you are with what you have?
Well, the Cedar Vine Manor, that, that's been there for, and it's under a new name and ownership now. I don't even remember what it's called, but that, like you said, that's in Wilson County. And there was an article in Wilson County, I think it was in Lebanon's paper, that they actually got approved as a planned development. That's actually where we got the idea for the planned development in our regulations when I read that, because I was, we were kind of struggling with how we were going to do this, and I read that. I even talked to the planning director at Wilson County and said, you know, "I just want to thank you, even though you have no idea what I'm thanking you for, because that helped us." I don't have enough information really on how large the structures are at Cedar Vine to really give you an accurate answer to that. It's, I've actually, I've spent some time at that facility after my wife and I got married. It was a beautiful facility, beautiful bed and breakfast they have there. There's a number of buildings and uses that they have there. It's not just for events. You know, they have that working bed and breakfast in the house up toward the front there. But I guess that's a long way of saying, I, it's difficult for me to say. It's a fairly large acreage tract, and I think that the, what we're presenting here, we're proposing with a two and a half percent, it's pretty generous as far as the amount of space that they could use when we start getting into acreage tracts. So, I'm not sure if I've got that. We had a chart on, we talked about the planning commission.
I've done a quick computation on it. For every acre, you can have a building one thousand sixty-four feet. Five acres, you've got five thousand square feet of thereabouts available.
Thanks, Mayor. But, so, it's, the larger, what we're trying to do there is the larger the tract, the more area you could use. But if you started using five percent, and I think some of the concerns the planning commission had, maybe that was too large of a, of a amount to use.
Other questions before the public hearing? For clarification? All right, if there are none, thank you, Mr. Demossi, and we will now declare the public hearing open with respect to these amendments to section fourteen oh eight and our appendices A, C, and D of the zoning ordinance. If there are those here that wish to speak for or against these amendments, it's your opportunity to come forward and make your comments and statements. So, if you wish to come and speak, please come forward and give us your name and address and make your comments. Okay, no one is rising to come speak? Therefore, the public hearing is closed. And Commissioner Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I'd just like to follow up on a couple of things. The planning commission started meeting on this topic in January, and it had seven different meetings, three of them dealing with public hearings. And as a result of all of those meetings, some of them were work sessions, and as a result of all those meetings, there were numerous amendments that were made to the original draft due to public comments and public input, and the public has been intimately involved in this process. And the final draft that we're now looking at is quite different than the original draft. And I think the planning commission, once again, has conducted at least three public hearings and seven different meetings, and it's been kind of a long, drawn-out process, but it, to me, indicates that the process is working and working very well. As a result of that, I'd like to move to adopt the new amendment to section forty-eight, fourteen oh eight of our zoning ordinance.
And do have a second? Commissioner Koush? Further discussion or questions?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Piercy?
I'm in the second district, and we're lucky enough that we've got five of these venues in our area. We're unlucky that one of them belongs to my wife and myself, so I'm going to abstain from voting on this issue. I feel like it's only fair to the other people that have a venue out there.
We understand that and respect that. Any other comments or questions? We do have a motion and a second. Therefore, we're ready to vote. It appears, all of you in favor of this, please say aye. Are there any opposed? Well, it looks like it was unanimous. So, thank the planning commission for their deliberations and their serious consideration of trying to provide a working document here. And just along with any other thing that we have in our zoning ordinance, if we find something is not working here, we expect you to bring it back for further amendments. All right. I think we have at least one announcement. Commissioner Allen?
Tomorrow night at the historic Train Depot in Smyrna, we're having our kickoff celebration for our summer festivals. So, it's called Simply Smyrna. It's a nighttime event, battle of the bands, food vendors, all of that, but a special thing will be happening at five o'clock. Our town charter is turning one hundred years old, so we had a cake delivered today that will feed a thousand people. Thank you to Joe West for cakes and catering. And so, we're bearing a time capsule, and we've got Smyrna's oldest living residents going to come and help cut the cake, so it's going to be a lot of fun. So, tomorrow night, five o'clock at Smyrna Train Depot.
Other announcements for many one?